The budget presentation.
Everybody all set? The time is six thirty. I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. The first item of business in our agenda is the roll call of those Board of Education members who are present. Vice President Lee, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Sure, Madam President. Trustee Fields. Trustee Townsend, here. Vice President Lee, I'm here. And President Hawkins, here.
We have four Board of Education members who are present and three who are absent. Next, that takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to invite everyone in attendance to join us in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Vice President Lee, move that the Board of Education accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion?
Trustee Townsend, support.
Thank you, supported by Trustee Townsend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to achievements, awards, and recognition. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Zachary Ross.
Thank you, Madam President. We're excited today to have one of our early learning centers. Ford Early Learning Center is here today. They're in the house. A lot of the staff members I see are here to support Principal. He's here, and he's going to come. Principal Young, will you come to represent Ford Early Learning Center?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel Young, the principal of Ford, and we also have a couple of Ford staff members here. Can you walk me?
Harry, our science teacher. This is McKinney Street, our kindergarten teacher. Will Banks, our Title I math teacher. We have Ellen Forstman, our newcomers teacher. And we have Ms. Morris, our first grade teacher. All right, so talking about the seven points of pride. And the first thing, of course, is that beginning next year, we will be a magnet grant school. We'll be a STEAM magnet school. So we're very excited about bringing science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, and making sure that it's integrated with practical, hands-on experiences for our students. The second piece is some strategic student supports. And a lot of these pieces really came out of, at the end of the year, where throughout the year, we're always looking at our practices and seeing what we can do to enhance learning. And so we have a couple of pieces that we've done this year. We have the after-school tutoring with our students. So, and of course, these pieces are there to help complete unfinished learning. So we want to be sure that we're closing any achievement gaps and make sure that we are completing the learning of students and making sure they have exposure to as much academics as possible. So we have our after-school tutoring, which began on March 4th. It would end on May 14th. And they are currently, we're currently serving forty-five of our students in after-school tutoring. We have when time, when stands for what I need. And that is a period of the day where we are very intentional about making sure that students get forty minutes of just literacy. And we're talking about students taking twenty minutes to practice reading, partner reading. So we give students partner reading strategies. And it's all hands on deck during that time of the day. So that time of the day, even our specials are shutting down. So our specials will go into the kindergarten rooms and take half of the students to make sure that we're working with smaller groups of students and giving them the strategies they need for partner reading, as well as taking another twenty minutes to work on imaginary. Because it's kind of hard for the teachers to get to imagine reading throughout the day. And it's in the schedule, but we wanted to make sure that we took another time because sometimes kids, even though they're on those iPads, you know, if you don't have enough eyes, they might be on YouTube, or they might be taking pictures of themselves. So we wanted to make sure that we had smaller groups so that we can better facilitate and make sure that they were doing what they're supposed to do. And on top of that, with that app, you know, they can work on a level that they're not really on. And then they start guessing and hitting. So this was our response to seeing that data. And so we made sure that we may be grouped smaller so that we can keep a better eye on what students are doing during that time. We also have the reading courts, of course, that comes through. And the person who we work with, her name is Donna, and she's constantly in. She has a table set up in the hallway where she works with students throughout the day. And of course, these are students that she sees, first graders. And we use the NWEA scores to decide which students go to her. And so she's working with students, and we see some great work coming from there as well. Also, we have Reading Buddies, and Reading Buddies is a partnership between us, the Children's Literacy Network, as well as Washington Off Promise, where they provide volunteers to come in and read with our students during breakfast time. So four days a week, they come in and they read with students during the breakfast time, just to expose them. And of course, the more students are exposed to more words, of course, it builds their vocabulary. We have some academic competitions that are coming up. The first one is the Math Jeopardy Competition, and that is actually tomorrow. It happens from nine thirty until ten thirty, and that's led by Ms. Will Banks. She's over there. She's our Title I math and teacher. And she creates this Jeopardy game for students to... And it's really a friendly competition about students enjoying learning because that's what we want to do. We want to make sure that our students are enjoying school, enjoying learning. So that is one of our competitions. And so our reading, Title I reading coordinator, she also does the sight word Olympics. And of course, we do that in the last week of May where students get ribbons depending on how many sight words that they learn. So we make sure that we're doing these pieces. And these are pieces that the students build up to every year. And because we want to ensure that learning is enjoyable for our students. So another piece that we added this year are clubs. And so what we were able to do, we were able to be creative with our schedule and include clubs. So the clubs happen every Friday at four. And so each special teacher has a club. For instance, the music teacher does Glee Club, one of the little ones. And so we have the Glee Club, we have the Science Club, we have our Mr. Perry. We have the Art Club. We also do Media Club, and we do Motion and Movement. Motion and Movement is really the exercise piece. But if we had called it Gym or Physical Education, everybody would sign up for it. So we kind of changed the name a little bit to make sure that we could get people in our other clubs. So, and so these clubs are really about... Children can get math at any school. They can get literacy at any school. But we wanted to be intentional about tapping into some of those talents early. We have seen some singers emerge. It's just really, it's mind-blowing to see the talents that come out of exposing children to these various clubs. So next, we have our newcomers program. Our newcomers class, as you all are aware, are in a couple of YCS schools this year. And it's a vibrant learning community, and that's Ms. Forstman. She's our teacher for that particular class. And it really focuses on language acquisition, cultural integration, and academic skills development. And so what happens in that class, the children get immersed in American school. And it's amazing to see the growth of the students from the beginning of the year to now because some of them have, they're not from families that speak English at all, and they're new to the United States. And I'm thinking about, there was a case where one student came in, and this was a new student. And he walked in with a friend. I guess he's, he called him his brother. It was his neighbor. He calls him his brother. He brought him into the classroom, wrong classroom, of course. And Ms. Forstman called me and said, hey, there's a kid in here that I don't know. And he sent him to the school with the parent. And he came into the room, and the children were showing him, this is how we do it in school. He even walked up to the cafeteria to show them where to get breakfast and how to get breakfast. He comes down, he invited him to the table, say, hey, sit right here. We got these books. He opened up the book, and it's just amazing that the routine is so strong. That, and of course, we got the kid to the right room. But, but the routine is so strong that he was willing to lead and show the other students. So that is the power of that room, the power of students showing each other what and how to do. And we're talking maybe a good fifteen minutes, maybe ten. So I don't want you all thinking we had stupid, and we didn't know where they were. No, she called immediately. And another piece that we have is our STEAM night. So on May sixteenth, we're going to have our third annual STEAM night. Now, we were doing STEAM nights before we would be, before we knew we would be a STEAM magnet school. So this is great. So it kind of falls right into alignment of what we're doing. And our third annual STEAM night is going to be held on the sixteenth of May. And it's going to feature the various student presentations that are related to STEAM, as well as our clubs will also. So our clubs are really STEAM-related, so they will also have presentations. And so we're looking for it to be student-led, you know, at this age when they're five and six. Sometimes it's a little rough to get them talking out. But we're going to have, we're going to do our best to make sure all of the presentations are student-led. So if there's a presentation up, we're going to make sure that the students are telling you, rather than us as the adults. Of course, we'd be there to help them, but we want to be sure that it's student-led. Was that my last? No, we have one last point. Number seven is, this year, we received a new preschool playground from the ISD for our preschoolers. So, and it opened up, we had an opening ceremony. I believe that was February, right? It was a very nice day.
February twelfth. It was February twelfth. It was my birthday.
So we did, we had the opening ceremony for it. And the students have been really highly engaged, loving the playground. So those are our seven points of pride.
All right, thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Thank you so much, and a huge thanks to your students and your families and your staff and your teachers and administrators. Javel done. Thank you so much. Next, that takes us to our first action item this evening under Student Affairs. And that is the acceptance of a field trip for Ypsilanti Community High School RCTC Culinary. Is there a motion at this time?
Trustee Townsend moved that the Board of Education approve the overnight field trip of the Ypsilanti Community High School Culinary Program in Benton Harbor, Michigan, on May twenty-first through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, for the PGA Tour.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Townsend. Is there support for this motion? Thank you, supported by Trustee Fields. Any discussion on this item? STEAM night, a motion was made by Trustee Townsend, supported by Trustee Fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of another field trip request. And that's Ypsilanti Community Middle School from April twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth. And it's the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Is there a motion at this time?
Trustee Fields moved that the Board of Education approve the field trip of the Ypsilanti Community Middle School to Charlotte Motor Speedway, North Carolina, on April twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Vice President Lee?
Thank you, supported by Vice President Lee. Any discussion on this item?
I'm going to just have one question. The board doc says the cost is seventy-five hundred, but the field trip says five thousand. Can we just get clarification?
Good afternoon, Board. Just to answer your question. I requested five thousand dollars from our Toyota Driving Possibilities STEM STEAM field trip budget of twenty-five thousand. So I requested that money. This is an engineering club, and they are going to present at the national. They went to the regionals in Atlanta, and they came in first place in all the events. So the girls, all-girl racing teams, which they built the car, they designed it, and they raced it, and they won. And they came in first place out of a hundred and six. So that's why we're going to, we're trying to go to Charlotte, North Carolina. So the other two thousand five hundred dollars is coming from the WISD and the wonderful Mr. Banks.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations on that.
Core, any questions?
No, are you going to give us some feedback about that first place? Because I remember you came last month when they went. I hadn't heard that, but I'm so, it's exciting. I mean, you know, but I'm just saying, I didn't hear the first place was first. I was going to ask that, so that's what I was saying.
Thank you, Dr. Zachary Ross. So I was so excited that we won. We were only, the boys and the girls team were only newcomers. These kids do this every year, and they've been doing it, all of the teams have been doing it for ten years. So we didn't even get our awards because it's been the same three teams for the last eleven years that came in the same quarter. So for us to win, nobody expected. So I want to say thank you publicly because as I was getting excited, I was texting, and I was like, we won again, and we won again. It was, it was emotional, honestly. So yeah, we, the kids did, they exceeded expectations. The only team to beat our boys team was our girls team. Our girls team did not. They were at a conference with fifteen thousand people. So the next big conference, it was the fiftieth annual. It was the definition of black excellence. Every, I mean, I told the kids, did you see anybody with a bonnet or a durag? No, everybody had suit on. They were, and it was just, again, they got to go to the zoo, the aquarium, the Civil Rights Museum, the NBA game. They went to the college football thing. The Centennial, what's it called, Centennial, where they, Park where they did the Olympics. So the kids, we did seventeen thousand steps a day. So we turned that into a magic thing, you know, in the yard. But yes, so again, to be able to go, and a lot of these babies haven't even done field trips. Nobody knew what a tram was, not one of them. They, that was their first trip on an airplane. So the boys can't go, even though they came in second because they were the first losing. But the girls team won, and it was, and we started in February. So, you know, we had eleven after-school practices, and they came in first.
Thank you.
Yes, and I got a whole bunch of pictures, but I...
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Yes. No, I wanted to hear about that. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Thank you. Well, that was an impromptu uh, little presentation. Kudos to, so we appreciate you, Mr. Davis, for sharing uh, how well our students did uh, and brung home the wins for the borough of boys and the girls. So congratulations to uh, the teachers, the students, uh, all the staff who helped support this and, and our families. Let's give them a round of applause. Uh, so a motion was made by trustee Fields, supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of a field trip, um, another request for Ypsilanti Community Middle School uh, happening on June fourth, and that is to Cedar Point. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, trustee Fields moved at the Board of Education, approved the field trip for Ypsilanti Community Middle School to Cedar Point on June fourth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you. A motion has been made by trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Support trustee Townsend.
Thank you. Supported by trustee Townsend. Any discussion on this item? STEAM night, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to uh, a request for a closed session uh, pursuant to uh, section uh, eight F of the Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Vice President Lee moved at the Board of Education going to closed session pursuant to section eight F of the Open Meeting Act to review and consider its content of an application for employment.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion?
Support trustee Townsend.
Thank you. Supported by trustee Townsend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. The Board of Education will convene in closed session at six fifty PM. We will leave and return and uh, go back into open session.
The 180 program at Holmes Elementary. Dr. Jeffrey Ross, would you like to introduce the presenters?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, we'll ask Dr. Raphael Johnson and our principal. That shoots, if you will come at this time, they are coming to co-present on the school-wide pro-social behavioral services that will be offered, that has started to be offered at Holmes Elementary.
Thank you for the opportunity to report you. I make sure I do that whenever I speak before anyone. I wanted to let you know that there's an old adage or aphorism that says, the earth can't produce nothing worse than its own man. So, we never want to be looked at in that light of grateful for the opportunity to serve the students here in the school district of Ypsilanti. For the sake of time, you can scan that, that'll take you directly to the website for more information, videos, testimonials, to see what we're doing in other school districts.
Oh, thank you. So you can scan that if you'll put your phone. We have an opportunity to scan at the very end as well. Very quickly, some of the stuff we presented before the board, I understand it may be up to maybe a few of you were not here, but the 180 program is a research-based pro-social behavior and mentoring program, also a comprehensive professional development system. Our mission is simple, to provide proven pro-social behavior strategies that challenges students' attitudes and behaviors, and improve the culture and climate within the academic setting. We have two, three theoretical frameworks that we've worked with. Dr. Albert Ellis's ABC Theory of Emotion, Dr. John Komer's School Development Program Theory of Change, also Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. Our legal background, we've been in existence for 20 years. The state of Michigan just yesterday granted us a certificate of good standing. We have no improprieties, no lawsuits, no investigations, no complaints. These are some of our partners in the last 20 years. Some of you may be familiar with, some of you may not, but this is also on the website. You can always refer back to the website if you want to get in-depth look at our partners in the past and currently. The services provided is a school-wide behavior support. As it stands now, Ypsilanti Community School, Community Middle School, we have three, three 180 personnels over there. Over at Holmes, we looking to have two. And then there's a professional development that I will be giving here in the school district at Holmes on April 19th, 2024, which will be myself and two other presenters to help me in that instance. It should be noted that additional certi- an additional certified 180 training is SEL, Social-Motional Learning, Trauma-Informed Support, Nonviolence Crisis Intervention, Emergency Use of Exclusion and Physical Restraint under the State of Michigan, Culture-Responsive Classrooms, and also the RTI model, which is an oldie but a goodie. I like to always say about that. The evaluation of data that we presented back in January 2023, there were evaluations that were fielded out by 35 participants. You can see the particular distribution of the participant roles from classroom instructors all the way down to coaches and administrators. Out of that particular data, what we were able to come up with was that 75.5% of all the participants strongly agree with the program and its effectiveness, but a 25% of all participants agreed with the program. So again, these are just some statistical results of the data that was presented back in 2023, January. It shows the distribution of participant roles and the level of agreement with the program among the surveyed individuals, which was 35. As it pertains to the 180 impact over at Holmes, I'm going to allow principals shoots.
Hold one back? Yes, yes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Board, for having me here tonight. I'm excited to show the impact that the 180 program has had on Holmes. Just a couple of quick data points before we see that graph again. So we've had Mr. Harris at our building since May, March 11th. Coach Dell has been in our building sporadically as well every day in the last couple of hours, and it was a full few days in the middle of March. But just last week, we had a four-day week. I was able to complete nine observations. I attended two IEP meetings. I was able to greet our scholars at the front door each day, and I ate lunch twice. So, that is something that is directly correlated with the 180 Project's presence in our school building. But that's just me. The impact on our students is real. The conversations that they are getting to have with the 180 mentors are real. They are having conversations every day about making mistakes and learning from them, resetting their day to get back to their learning, and they are spending less time in the hallways and more time in the classrooms. And from the beginning of the year till March 11th, we averaged 3.3 elopements per day. Since March 11th, that has gone down to 2.4 elopements per day on average. So our kids are spending more time in the classroom. That next slide, thank you, Dr. Johnson. This is the point at which, that slide on top is about, is the middle of the bottom graph. So the bottom graph shows you from the beginning of March till today, and the top graph just shows about a week, a week and a half of time when Mr. Harris and Coach Dell arrived at Holmes. And as you can see, the trend from their arrival to now is negative. It goes down, and that's our, those are our referrals, our office referrals to administration per day at Holmes Elementary. So it has been quick and successful and hugely impactful for our students and for my practice and for our teachers at Holmes Elementary. So I'm here with a lot of excitement and optimism for the opportunity to expand this at Holmes and potentially throughout our district. Thank you.
For the impact of the 180 program at Ypsilanti Community's Middle School, I want to bring Principal David home.
How you guys doing again? I am delighted to be able to speak on their behalf. I've worked with the 180 program and Dr. Johnson in Harper Woods and in River Rouge, and to have them really working closely with us here at Ypsilanti Community Middle School has been transformational for us. They have mastered the ability to create and sustain meaningful relationships. And I think everybody in the room understands that that is so key, and it's more than important for middle school, for all of our kids. But in the middle school, they tend to know what's going on before anybody else in our building. The kids feel safe with them. They are flexible, responsible. They are, for us, they're the glue in our, that I feel we needed to be able to, to take our administrative staff. I need them more in the building, and we're making a transformation at the middle school where my assistant principals are not really doing as much discipline. I need them in the classroom so we can work on our academics. And so having Coach Dell in the sixth grade frees up Mr. Blanchard to be in those classrooms, doing those observations, to do more than what the state tells us to do. I try to be in the classrooms every day, so I'm just popping in, and that's what we do. But what we really want to be able to do is transform our leadership, our admin team. And I love what Mr. Shoot said when it came to eating lunch. Now, I'm trying to get to that point, but at the same time, I don't get to do it as much, but it's not because of, the behavior at the middle school has changed drastically. They are a key component of why we communicate so effectively. And Dr. Johnson is so responsive, so it doesn't matter where he is. I tried not to call him when he was on his honeymoon, but other than that, if I need to call him, it's just like that. So, at the middle school, they have been integral in us making a shift, and that social-emotional learning and that trauma-responsive response to how they deal with our students and the way that they know them and the kids trust them has been invaluable for us. So, if it, I'm fully supportive, and I hope Carlos can write a grant to give me one more for when we move to the new building. So I'm gonna stop right now.
So that concludes our presentation. If there are any questions that you would like to present, hopefully we can answer them.
Yeah, I do have questions. So, from my understanding, this is, your program focuses mainly on behavior management, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what would be interesting for me to understand is, what is the correlation between the positive change in the classroom and how it is affecting academics? Because that would be the whole purpose and the reason why we continue to work with you is we would, that data should correlate to students having more success in the classroom academically. So do we have that information?
You wouldn't be able to get that at the short period of time that we've serviced. The first thing was be able to get the children in the classroom. The first objective is to be able to get those children to sit down and pay attention to the instructor. Then we can start working on the actual academic achievement. But we come into an environment, as expressed by both principals, where there's very minimal classroom management, and that's not a knock to our instructors. We there to assist, we are a team, and help them in that particular area. But when you have children that are running around, that you have children that are in places they're not supposed to be, and then, you know, every child has particular issues that's really just associated with that child. So it's more than just correction and redirection. Now we have to have a mentoring ear. Now we have to be empathetic towards these young people and hear out their issues and hear their problems. That's a process that takes, and get to know them, that's a process that takes months, according to the research. So it's all within the research. So to have that data, you have to, I don't know when they have testing or when report cards come out, but that is definitely a measurement, what we can see. We want to increase those academically by at least one letter grade, but we first have to deal with behavior. As you all know, that behavior impacts academics directly, and most instructors cannot teach when they have a classroom of individual students who are misbehaving. So our objective, again, is to go in, to correct, redirect, offer that empathetic ear, to have mindfulness of the young people's struggles and their plight, and to give them that voice of correction that they perhaps may not have in this community, or perhaps may not have at home. The very first thing, when you look at Dr. Albert Ellis's ABC Three of Emotional Development, whatever we go through, we have an attitude that develops behind what we experience. It's called the activating experience. And it hardens into our belief system, it hardens into a values or lack of values, it hardens into who we ultimately become and how we respond to situations in life. Dr. Albert Ellis has said, in order to change that thinking process, we have to provide individuals with different experiences. So in this instance with the 180 program, we want them to see people who look just like them, but provide, hello, how were you today? Good morning. Did you do your homework? How was your grades? I'm counting on you. Are you hungry? I got some snacks for you. Those are things that these young people have been biting on. They have just been gravitated towards what we think is simple, but to them, it means the world to them, just to ask them, hey, I like your hair, or hi, how was your day yesterday? How kind of weekend did you have? What did you do? And so we giving them the experience just by our presence in the schools that they may not get in the home, that they may not get in the community. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, they don't see too many black men or black sisters in their neighborhoods that's asking them, that's really truly concerned. So that's where the social-emotional learning component comes in at. And then as we work on the behavior, and it's not a turnaround. I'm not gonna sit here and say, oh, we can do this overnight. I'll be lying, and I don't lie about anything. It takes a process, a process. Did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say, in this game, uh, day when we figure out we, at Holmes, will have a pretty good comparison between our linear scores and our spring scores to show that, uh, we can compare from fall winter without the 180 program and then winter, uh, this spring.
We, tonight, uh, we have 180, you know, we have, we do 180, and I have a, a two, nine, not really, even. And one of the things that has taken place is that this first year has significantly built a new one versus the age age form. We have future student, year low, and everybody, everybody level, and this year we have such a win again. So, was, we're able to see, and I was in classrooms earlier this week, or last week, going into modern classroom, and to see them, where you can walk in the regular, you know, that bigger and formal assessment, and that's modern, and all the fact that we live in. So, to the thought of our goal, that's the beauty of teaching, like, be a brand teacher, or, and putting those supports, really supporting. When you walk into the middle school, day, or, is, so, that's the difference. And we're seeing them. And so, looking forward to this last, and now being, this coming up, is a huge.
So if I'm to understand, because I know we brought 180 in last April to the middle school, so we have, this month will be a full year. So then there should be, as far as data-wise, a difference in what we saw in scores last year versus this year? And it was. Okay.
I think it was way in that plan, and, and, and I think the other thing was having students walk in, have them really walk in there, and, it's amazing. I don't, kids really engage, do the academic instruction. I mean, that'd be a brand teacher, and also it allows for even movement of adults different ways to really support the classroom, and the rigor that's happening in that manner, compared to ELLA, etc., is a trend that, but.
Okay.
A great team, but, and even modern classroom, they want them, they still, not an exception. What, you, you, when I teach, it's, really.
And so then how is the, I guess, interaction from parents as far as how they feel with the interaction with their staff?
Yeah, teachers being able to see kids come home. That is my conversation, about what they're learning, those two, at one point in time, it was like, if you're finding, you're finding parents more for that. Now, the teachers are calling, engaging, saying, hey, this is what, if there's be more positive than negative, and it's highlighting the excellence. I think even when it's a problem, it's this spirit of, three people, I mean, that's happening in classroom, and what I love is the kids can sit down, whatever they want to sit, but they're wanting to collect, and no one is disrupting the learning. People, it's just clear to be wanting to play, without, you know, that separates from just, no, it could be there, but we got some habits, or some expectations they need to have, and they're having. I, I was very, I mean, I do want, but, it's, 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 it's.
And I just, I'm sorry, Dr. Harper, because I have one more question. So, also, when I think about interactions with students, especially with a child that says has some special education, those members from the 180 program have the certified training and all of that to know how to deal with those different things, correct?
Absolutely. That was presented the first time, and I just presented some training, certified training in the slides before, that's Ypsilanti.
Okay.
If they cannot work.
And the dynamic was, you address all, really responsible ways to make sure at home, especially from one of the students, you let them sure that we are addressing something, and that's when I suspend. We're actually, and one of the things that expectation from this board was to look at the quote, uh, comment, student quote comment this year, and to make it more restored. So we just said it here, I mean, it was a lot of how we, to make it more restored, adjusted to meet the need, but that we're not installing, we're sustaining students. We are using all from PPIs, the conscious disciplines, which are the practices where you don't, to really connect with students. We're talking about building the identity of those, so their students know who they are, and are collaborating, so their whole spirit is on me, is, is, usually happening in that, for creating, and if you go to middle school, you see, I mean, that.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was interesting. So my question was, so we're looking at data from March 11th to today, I'm assuming, from Holmes, and we didn't see any data from the middle school, we just kind of heard your background.
Sure.
But where, where's the other data?
It presented it last June, uh, for the middle school. Then he's just gave the.
Middle school, so, I'm just talking about from March 11th. What else could be, they've been here a year, so I'm looking at where else, you know, other stuff. We presented last, eight, right?
He gave the, he gave the middle school presentation last June. They just asked for the Holmes update.
Those were the two schools that they're.
Yes.
And so those are.
Thank you. Yeah, those are the two schools that they are going to be utilizing right now is Holmes and the middle school. There's a request for Erickson for this, at this meeting, but they're only in the middle school, and they just started in March. Oh, they just started this March, so we, so we have the whole year for middle, and we just doing Holmes since March. Just want to be clear. Okay. You are absolutely correct. You heard it correct. I'll write my notes down. You got it. You got it. All right, thank you. You on it.
There we go. So, the 180 coach, what are they doing different from the principals or to staff with a misbehaving child to get them to behave that the principal or the staff isn't doing? What strategies are they using?
You trying to get me in trouble?
I'm gonna get you in trouble.
Don't worry, I wanted to bust. Oh, I can't, I cannot, to be honest, in the spirit of transparency. I can't speak to what the principals are doing. I can only speak to what we're trained to do with our young people. A lot of times, as a building-level leader, you don't have time to, 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 to pay attention to every single student outside of memorizing their names and knowing their parents and know a little bit about what's going on. What's different, I can say, and I can be on the line with this, is that the 180 have the time. You bring them in, and there's some information on the website if you would like to go to. You bring them in and, and there's some information on the website if you would like to go to, to it. But we have the training and the time to deal strictly with behavior. And with the social emotional learning component, we have time to listen. We have time to correct. We have time to direct. We have time to mentor. And I can't, I've never been a building level leader, but I, I assume, uh, that a building level leader just don't have that time when they are running a particular building to give them, give the students all that they may be needing at that time.
Okay, that makes sense. Yes.
Okay, does not do it. Um, so basically for them, with us, they like to.
Come to the mic, please. Uh, there you go.
So they like their first response is for us. And so one of the things that happens with us is if we have frequent flyers or we have kids who, um, are easily triggered or sometimes it's the, it, it's amazing how some of our students just don't like to be around crowds. They, 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 they close down so much. And sometimes Coach Dale can go get a student, sit at the table by themselves when everybody else is in the room. And when a lot of our students, I always say clam up, they just don't want to talk about it. When there's nobody around, they open up. So instead of, our, our suspensions have gone down because when we work with the 180, um, team members, what they do is they can work on that social emotional learn. And so for me in our building, they, they work with the one, they work with the teacher first. If that's not working, then 180 person will come work with them individually. Find out what, maybe the teacher with 30 students might not be able to find out. Find out what that is, come up with a plan on how to re-enter them back into the room. And then if that doesn't work, then they might go to that building, I mean, that grade level principal. And it generally never gets to me. So I don't have to do the kind of discipline that I've had to do in the past because it's changed so much. And so again, having those, when, when we, you know, we have over 450 kids. So what happens is we, that point of contact, having that person who really does a good job of building those relationships. Sometimes it's just, we have somebody in the front of the line and you've got to put somebody in the back of the line to make sure nobody goes to the left or the right. And again, in our building, I remember at the very first week of school, saying good morning is a lost art. You'd be surprised how, when you greet every student in the morning with good morning and they don't say it back. Now everybody says it back. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's a shift. And it ain't just me. It's everybody doing it. Um, and Coach Dale is new to our building right now. But he jumped right in. It was like the train is moving and he just jumped on it. So for us, it's, not that we won't as principals, but again, one of the, trustee Townsend is so right. For us, our scores have gone up, but our discipline is going down. So yeah, I just signed a hundred, I'm, you know how many it was?
Bless you.
But my hand was hurt because I had to go sign all of our, everybody that made the honor roll. Today is that day we're gonna have, I just bought the ice cream and all that other stuff too. So again, that's what we did today. We hand sign those to make sure all of our principals are signing for all the students because you, you can't learn in the hallway.
Right.
So yeah, that's, that's the new, that's why we pull the tape up so they don't do those reset use in the hallway. Or in the, in the doorway so people can see you, whatever it may be. You can't learn in the hallway. So what we try to do is make sure, you know, that they are step one and then we go to step two and generally it doesn't get to step three. So that's just, I just wanted to kind of let you understand. We're using the same strategies, just at different times, making sure that it all works out.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all do have an open invitation to come through. I, I say that every time I see y'all, but.
Okay.
Your board members, his name was mentioned at least 10 times today. This is Coach Dale. I just want to introduce him so you can see he's the manager here in Ypsilanti. Uh, do you want to introduce yourself to the tonight?
Ladell, Mr. Ladell Spratt, uh, go by Coach Dale. It's just simple, uh, it garners of respect out of, out of youth and adult. I want to give honors to Dr. Johnson, Principal Davis, as well as Principal Schultz, uh, great guy, incredible, great man. What I like to do, and it's simple, well, first I want to say my, I'm a master of life coach. I'm a social service technician. I have a community health worker certified, uh, community peer support specialist certified. So, um, then in this a lot, um, start off with adults. I worked at the youth, uh, prison in Highland Park, Michigan, which is a terrible place. Testified against them because they're terrible with the youth. But what I do in the school, what, what made my, uh, I guess my approach successful is that I never take the legs away from the staff, the teachers. I believe the teacher should be the first one to correct a situation, uh, with the youth. What I do though, I was saying, and while the teacher's doing their thing, I can tell if the youth is accepting this correction or if they're spiraling down in a negative, uh, direction. So what I do at that point, I give, I ask the teacher, you, would you like me to talk to, give the student a chance to come and reset and talk to me? And the teacher say, yes, you know, throw the hand up, take the student out and I listen. Because the fact of listening is something a lot of our youth don't receive, uh, that's important. Just listen. And as you, I, when I ask openly the question, no matter how young, they tend to answer it from a set. I was just taking a time off, reset. We're all human. Anger is an emotion that is human. The thing is though, we cannot act out with our words, with our hands in the name. That's what you, a lot of our children come from broken homes and I get emotional because I come from a broken home. No father, my mother was not. So I understand what a lot of these people want. I had to fight through for my education and just stay positive. And I ran into gentlemen like myself. So I know the blessing. Um, so that's, I don't want to bore you guys, but that, my technique is very simple. I listen, I ask openly the questions. I allow the student to answer the question instead. For the situations.
Other board question? You can, yes.
We do have, uh, a female that works here, Ms. Nichols. She, uh, had to leave to go get her daughter at six o'clock. So she couldn't make it, but, uh, she is over here at Holmes, at Holmes Elementary as well.
Okay. And I just have one question and then kind of some follow up. Um, would you say that it is typical for this top, what would you say is typical? Cause I know you've been doing this work for a very long time. What would be typical for you in order to see, or, or to give us, I guess, some kind of estimates on growth? So like, we know that it's been in the middle school for a year. At what point would you say, cause I heard you say, give us time and, and we know it takes time to cultivate those relationships. We know it takes time to see improvement, to see impact. What's kind of the typical time where you would be able to see some of that impact and growth?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on your presence in communities?
There's a video you'll see on the website, an interview with Channel seven A B C, uh, where I indicated about 180 days consistent, working with the children.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see either growth in reading as, as Dr. Lopez indicated.
Okay.
Or you'll see a one letter grade improvement. So if they got a D or F, that goes up to a D or goes up to a C.
Mm-hmm.
That's the baseline, according to research, about 180 days, about six months of consistently working with the young people. Uh, but it varies. It varies depending on different, uh, variables that are, that are present within the young people's lives and school, et cetera, depending if the child has I E P or five oh four, whatever plan they have. All those are variables that, that kind of change the dynamics of the data. Okay. So, but typically the baseline is about six months.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
According to my research.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my next question is connected to sustainability.
Mm-hmm.
So this sounds like a great program, right? You're in three of our buildings now. I'm thinking about a model like this and, and when I think about sustainability, I think about, well, what happens when we don't have a 180, right? And, and, and what, what, I guess, what are some of the strategies, I guess, that you're employing right now to, to help to support and build capacity among the teachers, the staff, building leaders, um, so that they have those tools? Once, once this program, I, I mean, it may stay, you know, for a very long time. I don't know how long it'll stay. But I am wondering for that sustainability piece, how does your program build that into your structure?
You sound like a doctorate, that you have a doctorate degree. It's a joke.
Oh, oh.
Thank you. Great question. So if you remember the slide, there's, uh, an April 19th professional development. And I want to go back to one of our theoretical frameworks, which is Dr. James Comer's School Development Theory of Change.
Mm-hmm.
He is the one, if you look it up, who helped develop parent, uh, parent teacher conferences in this, in this country. He said that in order for our children to make a significant change, there have to be three factors.
Mm-hmm.
One, you have to work with the students. The other, you have to work with the stakeholders, which is the, the administration and the instructors in the building and also the parents.
Yes.
Okay. So with those three, you can make a difference. When you talk about sustainability, here's where we at. We want to get evaluations from parents. How's your child doing?
Mm-hmm.
Tell us, how'd they been doing the last week? Have you noticed a difference? Ask those open end questions so we can get, uh, elicit some answers from them. And the professional development, so we have a professional development and I, I hope that someone can come from this board. It's a professional development that was sponsored and adopted by Judge, Georgia Southern University. It's called culturally responsive and relationship-based pedagogy, emphasis in urban education.
Hmm.
It is one that I, um, by the grace of God, created, um, based on my travels, based on my experience, based on my being able to go across the country and gather information. Uh, so these individuals, and you'll see on the website whenever, whenever you get a chance, we want to be able to teach them and give them certain tools that they can put in their toolbox to help deal with young people and help create academic achievement and de, de, um, decrease those disciplinary referrals. It could be something as simple as this. And I seen, I took pictures because I'm using in my presentation on 19th. Just the classroom. How does your classroom look? Is your classroom inviting? Is your classroom someplace where they can just have a reset attitude and that they can go ahead and learn? Just simple things in the hallway, uh, understanding who you're dealing, what is the demographics of Ypsilanti? If you don't know what's going on in Ypsilanti and people households, how can you teach them? How can you have empathy? So it's a lot that goes on with this culturally responsive and relationship-based pedagogy. So we teach them that. When you talk about sustainability, it starts with information, correct information that hopefully they can make a right decision.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and this is a comment, um, to trustee Townsend. What I heard you say is that you want to see, so this board, we're laser focused on our, our young people, right? We care deeply about the students in this district. We care about data. We care about outcomes. Um, and so to, to your point, trustee Townsend, it sounds like, and I don't know where we are in our district's scorecard because we have times throughout the year where we have data that gets reported back to the board. And so it sounds like you want to hear or know kind of what that achievement data is looking like across our buildings and that's something that we can request. Is that what you're looking, is that what you're asking? I want to make sure I'm.
Yes, so it would be good to see the difference in the number of suspensions, um, the academic improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then he mentioned, um, in regards to parents, do you have a, um, a system in place to receive that data?
I sure do. We have.
So that would be good, the evaluations from parents.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's all I have. Um, for anything else? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right. Next, that takes us to our second, um, presentation this evening. It's our budget update. Dr. Zachary Ross.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And another area that we again want to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable is our budget. So this is a budget update. Um, we're calling it an amendment because there's several areas that we've been getting, um, additional funding. And so our, uh, chief financial officer, uh, Damian Butler will be bringing, uh, additional information to the board at this time. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm trustee, I'm superintendent. Our, our budget amendment or update is, uh, very simple and, and straightforward. This is our budget that we adopted, uh, towards the end of last year for this coming school year. We are on track to, we're receiving our, um, local revenue, our state aid is on track and our federal, uh, grants will go through in the next, uh, next slides. And continuing to work with our surrounding districts for incoming outgoing transfers. So for our, the major piece of our amendment for this year are the additional grants that we've been able to receive, uh, throughout the year. Dr. Lopez is, uh, adamant about finding opportunities for, uh, our teachers and students and some of the state grants that we've been able to, uh, qualify and receive our Michigan kids back track, early literacy and, uh, professional development curriculum. There are a few more that are in the works and we, we don't know if we're going to receive them yet. But those, uh, those grants coming in have helped us to stay on track. One of the biggest things that we've been able to, uh, accomplish this year that was different from, uh, past years is our drawdown schedule. We are, uh, consistently drawing down. We have a monthly schedule across all of our grants, be state grants or federal grants, that we know how much we're spending on, um, by the month. Cause we're, we draw down and receive those funds and we're able to apply them to, uh, the needs of the district on a regular basis. So our programs are on, like I said, on track. Uh, we have the column on the left, that's our initial budget and the column on the right is our to date spending. Each of those areas that includes salaries, uh, various programs, the support from these, uh, grants that we're getting and we're applying them across the board. The numbers on the bottom are the totals and we are on track. If we spend, is within last, the fourth quarter of the year, that's 62 million will be within our, uh, budgeted $85 million for the year. Some of the things that we, that, that may change and we have to keep an eye on are the changes for, oh, as our debt relief comes in.
Mm-hmm.
That'll impact our debt and our, uh, debt for revenue, local revenue. But the state has already, uh, begun to take care of those, uh, those issues. So the, we're on track. There are no major changes to anything we're doing. Uh, our ability to a, apply for and receive grants are helping us move forward. We are, we have a, uh, the, our team is in place. We, we've been able to fill all of our positions and those new folks are coming in. Training is consistent. We're getting, uh, in-depth training on our, uh, E R P, our, you know, budget management system and how we can make adjustments so we can alleviate some of the problems that we've, uh, come across in the audit. So as we go through and, and finish the school year, we'll have quite a bit of training to get us through the audit and prepare us for next year. There is, there, there are no major changes or concerns moving forward. So we, we're, we're on track to do what we set out to do last year. That's very quick and to the point, what questions can I answer for you?
Yeah. Um, President, um, my one question is, you have mentioned, um, I know there's an upcoming training with the new, the systems to make sure that we're, um, working with the adequate systems for budgets so we can address those things from the audit. Have we, does that also include the issues with food services and reporting, stuff like that, that would include that as well?
Yes, we've reached out to, uh, state. They've come in and worked with us and given us some guidance on a few things. And we've got some, uh, individual training for the folks in the food service office so we can make sure our information lines up and we are good to go.
Okay. So then if everything is on track, we shouldn't have any major changes. So from with this outstanding 23 million, correct?
Yes. So the, the difference in the, the two columns is that we're at the fourth quarter.
Mm-hmm.
Our spending is on track to meet what we set for for last year.
Okay.
But the last quarter, we'll, we'll bring those numbers together.
Okay. Thank you.
Other board question? Thank you, Mr. Butler. Next, that takes us to our public comments this evening. Um, and we have three public comments this evening. Um, the first person that I will invite up after I read the public comment protocol will be Lindsay. Is it Pachero? Pachero? Pacheco. Pacheco. Okay, and none of my comment cards this evening that came in have topics on them, so when you come up, could you please? Okay, thank you. I'll write that in. Um, I'll read the public comment protocol and then I'll invite you up. Uh, the board pursuant to Board of Education Policy zero-one-six-seven-point-three, the board recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express their views. Please limit statements to three minutes in duration. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually, and all remarks shall be made in a respectful and professional manner. Lindsay?
Is it okay if I start now? Hi, my name is Lindsay Pacheco, and I'm the mother of Aiden Roman, who's a second grader at what was known previously as Miss Reeves' class at Estabrook Elementary. Um, we have been lied to and failed by Estabrook as a special education classroom. We are enclosed, uh, classroom with mostly kids that are on the spectrum. We have had a teacher for ninety days of this school year. The rest, we have not had a teacher. We have had long-term subs who are not qualified to be in our classroom. Since Miss Reeves was pulled from our classroom, I would like to let the board know what has been going on with these students. First off, my son is regressing. Um, he was potty trained by Miss Penn from Yikes, and now he is in a pull-up because they will not take him to the bathroom in class. My son was found in the parking lot alone by me during school hours, and they had no idea where he was on one-ten-twenty-four. I was told that they were understaffed, and what the school does not realize is my child could have died. He has non-verbal autism, and this is a huge violation of his IEP. My son has no access to his talking device that is issued by this district. It is put in his locker, and he is not allowed to have access to it or retrieve it throughout the entire day. I've received emails from the principal of Estabrook saying they do not have staff for his classroom and to keep him home because it is not an environment for him to go into. Mr. Brown and Ms. Briano, who are the parapods in that class, are the only reason my son is still attending school. I trust them with him a hundred and fifty million percent. All of us parents feel that way, and I've talked to everyone's parents today on the phone. We would not be sending our kids or trusting our kids in this district if they were not in the classroom, and I would just also like to say on the record, they deserve a pay raise. They've been trying to be a teacher when they don't have the qualifications and they can't be, but they have stepped up and tried to fill those shoes as best they could. On top of that, we have been countlessly lied to by Ryan Johnson, the principal. He has been telling us, I'll have a teacher for you next week. I will have a teacher for you next week. Ms. Penn is starting on April first. Ms. Penn is not starting on April first. We still do not have a teacher. Um, we are not working or gaining any new skills or working towards an IEP goal. We don't even have current IEPs. They are not being filled out. I have talked to Ruth Jordan. My son has not had a single IEP ran this year. We never experienced this with Ms. Maggie. We never experienced this at Yikes, only at Estabrook, and we keep getting promised by Ryan Johnson that it will change and it will do better. I beg this board to do right by these kids. All five of these boys have been together for two years and developed a lot of skills, and they are losing all of them. All of them are worth something. All of them are worth your attention. We can sit up here and listen to all these great things the districts are doing, but they are forgetting about our children. We are unheard, we are not seen, and we are tucked in a back classroom, and our kids are just supposed to sit there until we pick them up at four o'clock. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next, we have, so please correct me if I pronounce your name incorrectly. Uh, Pretty? Uh, and what is your topic? Substitutes? Okay, I'm gonna write it in. Thank you. You may address the board.
It's gonna be three minutes.
You got it? All right. Sorry about that delay.
No worries.
Go ahead.
Um, so, um, I'm a parent at Wise. Um, my daughter's in the second grade there. Um, and I've been noticing that a lack of substitute teachers leads to students missing science and music classes. Um, the issue seems to be that we pay too little, um, to have enough substitutes from the contracted agency. Um, from what I've heard, we pay about half as much as the Ann Arbor School District. Um, with, and it's, from what I've heard again, um, it's about a hundred and twenty dollars a day, which works out to about fifteen dollars an hour, which seems quite low for a teacher. Um, so I think students deserve better specials education, particularly in science. Um, I don't feel like that should be relegated to something that can be missed so easily. Um, and also Wise is an IB school, and the lack of science education may impact IB accreditation. Um, especially as the district is planning to add new IB programs. Um, so I'm just, I'm just here to figure out what is a good solution for this. Um, should we be, can we pay the agency subs better? Should we have, um, a dedicated district-wide, um, sub pool? Um, can the PTO fundraise for this? I'm not sure. Um, how does the, I know that this year we received some school debt relief. Um, so does that open up funds to pay substitutes better? Um, and also I, um, appreciate seeing the, the budget just before this. But is there a place that we can see more details of the budget? Um, is, is that available to the public? Um, so that's, that's pretty much what I have. Um, I had emailed Ms. Godrich, um, who suggested that I talk to the board directly. Um, so I'm hoping that, um, the board would follow up with me. Um, and if there's anything that I need to do to follow up, just let me know. So, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Veronica. And your topic? Okay, updates and special ed? Oh, and, okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Dr. Hawkins, Board of Education and Dr. Zachary Ross. So a couple of weeks ago, I came to you and told you about my son, um, and him getting hit by a car and all that good stuff. Today, I am happy to announce he is crutch-free today. So he is very happy, he is excited, little scared, little nervous. Um, so that's a beautiful update. Unfortunately, not all updates are as exciting. Aiden is still going to end up receiving compensatory services for his social work for a, almost a year and a half. He has not received social work. Thank goodness for Ms. Ayers and for Dr. Farmer. Um, as Dr. Farmer has also gone above and beyond to help Aiden to be able to cope with, um, some PTSD type of symptoms. Um, when it comes to walking and crossing streets and things of that nature. So thank goodness for all of them. I do have many concerns still about special education. Um, I do feel, as Lindsay has also stated, um, that special ed students are, become second best. And that they are forgotten. Many of the special appearance do not show up to board meetings. They really don't. And I'm wondering if the board might understand why. For me, as a special education parent, even when I went to church with my son, I'd get those stares, I'd get those looks. Quite nerve-wracking, and it makes you feel very self-conscious. I shouldn't have to feel that way. My son should not have to feel that way. No student or child or parent should have to feel that way. But you do. I asked the board to consider talking to special educator, education parents and the children get to know the special education people that are in your schools. Get to know them. Ask them questions. Ask the students questions. Ask them how they like the special education. As the parents. Because what I see might be different from other special educations or what my son might experience in the high school. I would love to see the one-eighty program in the high school. I am not gonna lie. I would love to see that program in the high school, just based solely on what my son has gone through. I have yet to receive any reach out, except from the board from the last time that I spoke and sent me a lovely email, and I greatly appreciate it. But I have yet to receive any reach out from special education. Besides from Ms. Ayers or Dr. Farmer. Aiden is up for his reevaluation, and we're in the process of scheduling that. And his scores are low. I will not lie. They are low. And it's because he has not received specific interventions. And that's really sad. That's very sad. And I hope that it does change. So I do ask the board, please consider talking with your special education families on a one-on-one basis. Get to know them. Get to know their kids because if you're anything of having a feeling for any child, you will love these kids to death, and you will never forget those kids.
Thank you. And last, we have Steve Lambert.
Uh, first of all, I want to apologize for not knowing the procedure, and thank you for taking me even though I was way late on my card. Okay, uh, I'm assuming that everybody on the board got one of these or knows what it is? Um, uh, trying to get information, um, about the, uh, line item appropriations. And, uh, when I read, uh, section seven-oh-one, uh, it goes down through the different, uh, appropriations. The wording, um, changes in several of them. Um, it starts off with, uh, the school district emergency, uh, loan debt relief. And it does this for several of the school districts. Now, it comes on down in, uh, section C of, uh, seven-oh-three is about the Ypsilanti Community Schools. That wording changes from emergency to Michigan Finance Authority of Ypsilanti. Uh, then you go, a couple of others go back to the, uh, emergency deal. And then when it gets down to Inxter, it changes to outstanding school bond loan, that sort of thing. Willerun goes to outstanding school bond loan funds and school loan revolving balance. Uh, now, this is a lot of money. There's fifty, some fifty-six million dollars involved. And the last, uh, of the, uh, where it mentions YPSI and, uh, Willerun Community Schools. Uh, it says, uh, there's a, gonna be a, I guess, a remaining balance on whatever this is. But it states that any, a portion of the amount remaining is to go to retire the debt of either former Ypsilanti School District or former Willerun Community Schools. Or to improve student achievement or that sort of thing. The question I have is that, um, I know that the millages for the two districts were different. They combined them. And either way I read this, I talked to Jeff Irwin, and his explanation was that this thing that the governor signed was not to retire that debt. It was to equalize something. Uh, I don't believe that the board believes that. I know that the township board doesn't believe it. But being I'm not a lawyer or anything like that, um, does the, does the school board believe that this funding was to take away that thirteen mills from Willerun District, the former Willerun District, and whatever millage that the Ypsilanti, uh, for the, uh, for, excuse me, I want to make this right, uh, for the debt. The, any millages for debt. Was that for the YPSI School District, former YPSI? Is that what your belief was?
We're gonna make sure you talk to our CFO because it's very much spelled out in that law. And he can show you exactly where it is. It's spelled out very clearly in there.
Should I talk to Mr. Hudson afterwards or?
Mr. Butler afterwards.
I mean, Mr. Butler.
Yes, yep, he can, he would, because it's, it's very clear right in there. It's, it's absolutely, but you just need to know where it is and what it means.
Well, I don't wanna, you know, I don't want to start a fight.
Nope, it's not. It is really clear. But he, you just need to know what it means, just.
Yeah.
And I'm, thank you for coming and asking.
Okay. When can I talk to Mr. Butler? Just right now or afterwards?
Maybe immediately following the board meeting. Um, and, a- and, and the reason, a- and typically, our process is not to respond to members of the public. But, but we know that it's really important for information that is shared to be accurate. Yeah. And we don't want misinformation to be spread about what this debt relief is or what it isn't. So it's important for us to make sure we get the facts
Yeah.
out there, and so we will make sure that Mr. Butler takes the time to answer questions and point you in the right direction so that you get clarity on what you're seeking tonight.
Well, my next, my next move is to Governor's Office.
Okay.
To find out what she has to say about it.
All right, that sounds good.
So, but I'll take care of that, and I'll get back to Mr. Butler at a later date. Once I, once I get ahold of some people where I get some, some better information. But at least I know who to talk to, okay?
Well, we appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our public comment portion. The next item on our agenda is the, uh, consent, the consent agenda. Is there a motion at this time?
Personnel ma- personnel matters as per the presented list dated four-one-twenty-four. New hires, resignations, and retirements.
Thank you. A motion has been made by trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Support by Vice President Lee.
Thank you, su- supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, that takes us to, um, an a- action item under human resources, and that's the approval of our custodial contract. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, Vice President Lee moved that the Board of Education approve the custodial contract employment of Kelvin Jones with the commencement date of April nine, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion? Supported by trustee Townsend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Welcome to Kelvin Jones to the district. Next, that takes us to an action item under business and finance. That's the acceptance of the one-eighty program for Holmes Elementary School. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, trustee Fields moved that the Board of Education accepts the attached quotes for the one-eighty program for Holmes Elementary School proposals for the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five.
Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Fields. Is there support? Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Fields. Is there support for this motion?
Trustee President Lee, support.
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the
Questions on that or no? Do you have questions on that? We just keep going? We don't?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Can we ask questions or we keep going or we ask?
Oh, okay, because they just presented. I didn't know if the board had questions, but we can go back.
I didn't see this part though. I, I just had a question regarding the amount. Right? So as we're looking in this, they both are the same amount, but is it the same amount of time in each school? I'm just asking because, you know, we, it's one for Holmes. And then it's Erickson one, it's the same amount, but are they gonna be in it like the whole year like they were for the middle school? To come up with that amount? I'm just asking, or is it as, as, as need based? You know what I mean? It's, so what does that look like?
We'll get the answer to you.
Okay.
So it's the same, yeah, it's the same contrast with the uh, with Holmes?
It's the same one for both.
Right, so I mean, but it's not like all year because I know they just started in March. So I'm just curious like how that works to come up with the same amount, but you only for three months? You know what I mean?
So the, there's two, uh, even though it's one amount that's listed there, the first contract carries us from this point tomorrow all the way to the end of the year, the, the year, and then the other one carries us throughout, throughout the next year.
And then it'll start like the first like six months again?
Uh, no, the other one carries you through the whole, the entire year next year, all the way to June uh, twenty twenty-six. Okay, so that way it's just that starting this, start to finish up the year. First of all, Kelly's here, so she, okay?
All right, thank you.
Does that, does that, yes, your question trustee fields?
Yeah, kind of, but I was still kind of, you know, I'm just like, like a timeline because I really don't see that, you know? Because we just got the information about homes for three months. I mean, two, not even a month, six weeks, like it was at March eleventh and now we're today. For that amount and that, and it's till the rest of the year, is that correct? Rest of the school year?
The rest of the school year plus the next academic year.
The whole year then, okay.
Is that correct, Dr. Lopez?
Okay, so the whole year. And then Erickson will be starting in September?
Well, no, start now, uh, starting tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay, okay.
Then it carries all the way to June and then it carries the, and then, then we're correct for the following year as well.
Okay, okay.
For continuity, you know, but we, you know, just to get us through this year.
Okay, okay, great. I just, I just didn't really like see dates and I was like, okay, I just don't know how long we doing that, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So for just for clarification, in action item twelve, it says dollar amount a hundred thousand. That's, that's where the clerical, I think it's a clerical, because on the next motion it has the correct amount.
The one twenty-two?
Right. I don't know if that's what trustee fields was representing.
Well, I noticed that too, but I was just wondering all the time because you know, you wanna know how long the contract is going, whatever year. So I didn't see that in here.
Yeah, that one hundred is a, that's an error. It should be one twenty-two, how the motion was written, one twenty-two, six twenty-five, which covers the balance of this school year and then all of next school year.
Right, and then the dollar amount is best, needs to be corrected, right? With a hundred thousand versus dollar amount a hundred thousand and you go down and say a hundred and twenty-two?
Yeah, it's correct in the motion, but it's not correct in the dollar amount.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion uh, was made by trustee fields, supported by Vice President Lee. Any other questions for before we move to the next motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the one eighty program for Erickson Elementary School. Is there a motion at this time?
Trustee Townsend moved that the Board of Education accepts the attached quotes for the one eighty program for Erickson Elementary School proposals for the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Townsend. Is there a support for this motion?
Trustee fields, I support.
Thank you. Supported by trustee fields. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, motion made by trustee Townsend, supported by trustee fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the Ypsilanti Community Schools paving project for Stamps for the Sampson Bus Garage. Is there a motion at this time?
Vice President Lee moved at the Board of Education grant out allied asphalt paving and Sampson Bus Garage paving projects in the amount of one thousand seven hundred one thousand, one thousand seven hundred. Seven hundred forty.
That's one hundred.
Okay, let's start over. Amount of a one hundred seventy-four thousand fifty, uh, fifty dollars.
Yes. Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there a support for this motion?
Trustee fields, I support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, please. Um. Did we see the resist it? Cause I couldn't find any other um what do you call it, estimates?
Yeah, I sent the bid tab, tabulation. There was an RFP, a request for proposal that went out on the state site. Um, and then we interviewed um, our top, the low bids. Uh, that
Is this it here?
We had a really competitive bid. Um, some of our projects in the past have been completed by a, a previous, a, a former, I'm not saying former. Uh, a, a, another uh, company. They were in the bid process as well. Um, and allied.
Yes, I see him here, but I didn't see what all they would be doing. You know, for the
So the, the scope of work will be, it's a milling cap, so they mill down the old uh, asphalt and uh, and then make sure that the base is ready to receive a new, uh, new cap. And then there's two layers of asphalt that are um that are, that are reapplied, uh, similar process to all of the uh, paving projects that you've seen thus far across the district, Erickson, Holmes, the high school, Shadford, um, same exact process.
Okay.
And I apologize if the bid tabulations weren't shared with you, but we
They just didn't know, like it doesn't say like what exactly they're doing, like, yeah.
Yep, so the scope of work is a, is a milling cap, so they'll be um, taking the old, milling it down and then uh, hauling that away. Making any uh, any adjustments to uh, the base that's needed, foundation, and then uh, reapplying asphalt. So exact same process that we've done in all of the um, paving projects the past three years across the district.
Okay.
And it's what's the chief?
And those will go in the location where our brand new EV chargers are at.
Okay.
Sorry for the lack of clarity.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions, discussion? Motion was made by Vice President Lee, supported by trustee fields. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is the acceptance of the convergence for additional cameras for Ypsilanti Community Schools. Is there a motion at this time?
Vice President Lee moved at the Board of Education accept the presented as presented the choice of convergence as the recommended vendor for the work of expanding camera coverage for Ypsilanti Community Schools.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there a support for this motion? Thank you. Supported by trustee Townsend. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion also carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the VSC Technologies for Building PA and Classroom Audio Systems. Is there a motion at this time?
Madam President, trustee fields moved at the Board of Education award as presented the selection of VSC Technologies for installing a building wide PA and classroom audio system for Ypsilanti Community Schools at Willa Run Middle School.
Thank you. A motion has been made by trustee fields. Is there a support for this motion?
Support, Lee.
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. Any discussion on this item? See?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Vice President Lee, and then trustee Townsend.
I don't have anything on this. Do you? Have any information on?
She said that was the long one. That was in the packet, the twelve page.
That's the one I saw that.
Not in the heart.
She said it was the twelve pager.
Okay.
That she didn't print. That's in the packet.
It wasn't printed. Okay.
But it was sent out electronic.
You can, you wanna speak to it? I don't wanna speak to both.
Hi, good evening, board. Um, so the VSC contract uh, was also a bid that we did, and this will bring continuity in terms of the PA and the audio, classroom audio systems to the district uh, at the Willa Run Building, in alignment with the rest of the district. So that's what that project encompasses, is the classroom audio and the PA system.
What, just to update it?
Us, yeah, no, that's a wonderful question. So we, we have a, the, the original system in there, but it needs to be so that they have parity between the building that they're moving from to the building they're moving to, and so that they have the exact same system they can walk right in and be used to having the same uh, audio reinforcement in the classroom and also the same um, updated PA system throughout the building.
Okay.
So I, I did look at that, um, but I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this is for, because of the move, correct? So I thought we were going to have a full approval of a budget this month for that entire project, or is that supposed, is that coming to us now in May?
I don't remember. I, I have, I don't recall the, a full approval of the budget, but it, it, um, I think the board would probably see more action items like this that we will need to approve, but you're saying that you thought everything was coming in one.
That's what was told us.
Full proposal.
That's so we would encompass what the full amount would be.
For the renovations and
For the renovations.
So at least for the VSC part of the project, um, it was in a proposal that we did, uh, did submit for our move budget. Uh, I wanted to bring it to the board, uh, because we went out to bid and now I just wanted to make, and we went through the competitive bid process and we had lots of interest and I wanted to make sure that this component, the board is aware, so not just, you know, a line item somewhere in a bigger budget, but that this is within the original proposal for technology part of the move. And um, this would uh, just make sure the board is aware that this is the vendor that was chosen out of the competitive bid project and seeking approval for that.
So this is coming out of Estor funds?
I'm not sure if I'm the best person to
That's what it said.
Yes, it, it is my understanding that it is in my, in, in my submission to the board. Um.
So it looks like, not that I wanna jump back, but it looks like the cameras and the PA system and the um audio system is all coming out of the Estor uh, funds.
That is correct. It's, um, yes, as I've been made aware. That is the fund we are planning to use, utilize for um, these projects.
Okay. So to your, your point, trustee uh, Townsend, we try to get some clarity on the, the big budget. You wanna speak to it or is Mr. Butler?
Yeah, cause I thought before we went to bid, we did the, we had the, the building amount and the technology amount, and it was an estimated amount, but we had to get the amounts from the bid. So this is the, this is where you're getting the final. Right, so it was estimated. Right, so this But not base, but you all were supposed to come back to us with numbers to, so that we knew for sure, because the thought process would be this project would be about five million dollars. But we wanted to have clarity for sure that we were in line with that estimate. Right, so they gave you some, they gave you what they thought, but this is where they went out to bid, so he's bringing you the numbers from where they went out to bid. Right, but when we had discussions about this, it was, we discussed talking about having the board look at a comprehensive budget so that we can stay in line with finances and to make sure that the board was fully understanding what we were about to pay for. So that's why I just wanna make sure that we're clear on that. Yes, they came to the meeting and gave some rough, rough estimates, but they were supposed to come back and give us, like, this is what we for sure know what we're gonna have to do. And so my understanding was they were gonna go out, get the bids, come back. All right, these are the bids that we received. What we're looking at doing, this is what our cost is gonna be. Or projected to be.
So I think two things have to happen. One, we have an estimate of the budget that gives us some projections about what estimated cost might be. Then once we get specific bids back, because that's just our law, we have to bid. Um, and then I'm assuming that then we'll have a budget update that will reflect the actual amounts. And I don't know how that compares to what we budgeted, but I hear what you're saying. You wanna know kind of what are, what's, what's the scope of the project? What are the line items in that budget? But I think we have to do both because we, they can't move forward with, with this until we approve, because we have to approve this as a board first. And then once we approve it, they'll update the budget and then they can bring that back to us to look at all the different line items, so we can see the full scope of the project. But we can't, we can't do this part at all.
I just wanna make sure. I just don't want any surprises, that we think it is five million, then it's really nine million. That's, I don't want no surprises.
No.
Right, everybody's under bid, under the bid, but So that I'm, but when we were looking about the timeline, we were saying we need to have stuff approved. We had the one meeting. The timeline was there, we need to have everything, I think, approved by the May meeting if we're trying to open in August.
Yes.
So that's why I just wanna make sure we're still on track for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Confidently say that for technology as well.
Okay, excellent.
So I think, yeah, that's the problem. We've gotta get you guys' approval as we're opening these bids.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we need to give them as, as we're moving, what I'm hearing team, I'm sorry, I'm getting out of protocol here. Is giving them updates as we're moving down as well. Uh, so, Mr. Butler, as we're doing our board updates too, keeping them as we're running down, running, a running record.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you for that.
That's a great question.
You give me off track, you give me
I got it, I, I'm right. It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Good stewards of the district's resources as we are. Uh, okay, next that takes us, wait. Thank you. A motion was made by trustee fields, supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of the data image for Ben Q interactive panels for the Willa Run Middle School classrooms. Is there a motion at this time?
Trustee Townsend moved at the Board of Education award as presented the selection of data image for procuring installing interactive panels for the Ypsilanti Community Schools at Willa Run Middle School.
Thank you. A motion was made by trustee Townsend. Is there a support for this motion?
Trustee fields, I support.
Thank you. Supported by trustee fields. Any discussion on this item? Thank you. Supported by Trustee Fields. Any discussion on this item?
Now, also, I don't have a hard copy of this, so I just want to make sure that I am looking at it, and also this is being paid for by Estor funds, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty-fourty-two.
Any other questions, Vice President Lee?
And these are panels for?
These are the Ben Q boards, like, that's in the, the room we just did the closed session. So these are the, so that we're not moving the Ben Q boards from the other middle school. We need to put them in, have the new ones installed from the company, because there's casualties. If you move the other ones, if something happens, if we damage them, if we have our own people move them, there, there's some liability in that.
Okay.
So we're buying Ben Q boards, so that if we use that other building for something else, we'll have new ones. They'll get calibrated and, and done properly, installed properly.
All right.
I'm doing your job, sorry.
Right. Any other board questions?
Is there anything you need to add?
No, it's, again, it's the same thing. We, we have parity for our teachers coming to a familiar situation. They, they know how these systems work now. It's been a year and a half and or actually almost two years now, and so they're, they can focus on teaching rather than trying to learn a new system or some other process.
Okay. Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Townsend, supported by Trustee Fields. All those
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the approval and adoption of the amended budget. Is there a motion at this time?
Trustee Townsend moved that the Board of Education approve and adopt the amended budget as presented.
Thank you. A motion was made by Trustee Townsend. Is there support for this motion?
Support, Vice President Lee?
Thank you. Supported by Vice President Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to the acceptance of a donation. EMU Driving Possibilities Project. Is there a motion at this time?
Vice President Lee moved that the Board of Education accept the donation from EMU Driving Possibilities Project for five thousand dollars.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Vice President Lee. Is there support for this motion?
Trustee Fields, our support?
Thank you. Supported by Trustee Fields. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next, that takes us to our second public comment portion for this evening. Ms. Haynes, have any cards come in? Okay, okay. Thank you. That now takes us to our discussion. Any Board of Education Subcommittee reports at this time?
Yes, Vice President Lee. I have attended the Head Start Policy Committee. They have not been attended well by the parents. We are looking to have parent participation. We're trying to build that up. So so far, we have not had it, and we are looking for a chair in what, some other, a treasurer? Yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
Three parents totals, but we are going forward with the meeting still. So our next one is I think the twenty-second or the twenty-third. So we're pushing forward, and hopefully the parents will start stepping up.
So, okay. Well, thank you for that update, Vice President Lee.
You're welcome.
Any other Subcommittee reports?
The YCF Foundation Scholarship Deadline is today, and we will be meeting, the committee will be meeting on Thursday to start looking at selecting those scholarship recipients, and that will be presented at the celebration in May for the seniors. The other thing in regards to the WASB, I believe there was supposed to be some special develop, special, what is it, professional development? That was emailed to everyone for, I believe, the eleven. So I don't know. I'll follow up with them just to see where we're at, because I was asking for an update myself. But the Budget Committee, the Annual Budget Committee will be on the eighteenth. It is going to be via Zoom. And that is, I want to say, at six o'clock. So I will have, it's from six to seven, the WASD Annual Budget Presentation. So I will make sure that they send a reminder out for everyone, but it will be via Zoom.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Trustee Townsend. Any other Subcommittee reports?
We have not met on, with the Communications yet, so I don't have, I don't have anything to come back with yet recently, so I don't know if we have anything scheduled, but I guess they'll let me know, but
Okay.
I don't have any feedback for the Communications Subcommittee.
All right, that is fine. All right. For Superintendent Comments, for?
Madam President, I would like to first thank the entire Board, Central Staff, and all of the teachers that came out for the annual Community Easter Egg Hunt Extravaganza. We had over five hundred people. It was hot up in there. We had an excellent time. All of the Divine Nine showed up, showed out. Everybody hustled. And those kids were happy. That's all I care about. I want to do a special thank you to our Facilities Team.
Yes.
They did an awesome job, came in with great customer service. A special shout out to the new team member, William. I don't know his last name.
Right.
But William got right in line. And emptied my truck.
And he did.
And so William was working, and he fit right on in with the team. I'm just so happy about, that Facilities Team always come in, do what they need to do, make everyone feel welcome, and it was just an excellent representation of the district. We even had members from other school boards come over to see what Stronger Together looks like. We had a host of politicians that were there that understood what Stronger Together looks like. And so I'm just so elated and happy. This has been a, the, the letter said twenty-five years, but it's been over thirty. That it started in ninety-seven, I believe, by a Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. But since then, the Divine Nine and other African-American organizations have taken on this charge, and I just want to also thank the lead for this year was the WCDP Black Caucus. You're welcome. I appreciate my team. Trustee Fields, I want to especially thank all of our sponsors. Washtenaw County, the Print Giant did all of our marketing for us. That is a Willa Run alumni, Opie O'Shaughnessy. I dealt with African-American owned businesses and also alumni. I was very intentional about that. The Van Companies, McDonald's, Eastern Michigan University, Washtenaw Community College. Who else am I forgetting? Lord, that's Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department. Then the.
Professional Black Women's.
Yep, so it's a whole list, so thank yous. I have been going out. Photos will be sent out. Just started a new job today. So I'm just very excited that this has continued, and I'm especially thankful to Dr. Zachary Ross. Ypsilanti Community Schools has always opened up their doors and made sure that we were taken care of. So we're very excited about that partnership and what's to come next year. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate.
Yes.
Because y'all know I had a petting zoo there. Y'all know I'll do anything for my babies. And so we were really excited with all of the vendors. So thank you again to the Facilities Team and all that they do, and we're just excited to continue these partnerships with the community. Thank you.
Yes.
She's too kind, but we really want to give our hats off to Trustee Townsend.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, because she she did such short notice with the weather. She was in there like at seven o'clock in the morning, making sure everything was well, and it looked good for it to be inside. I mean, you, I would have thought that people, when they came, because of it being inside, but we had just as many inside as we would have outside.
Too, right?
Yeah. It was a great representation of many hats that she wear, and I just appreciate you. You always, I, I always told someone, anything that she's involved, it's always going to look good. I'm just going to tell you, she's not going to let anything slide by.
That's exactly.
Or get by. So I just want to tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you for pulling that together at when you did. I was like, oh my God, how are we going to do this? And she came through, so I just want to say thank you for that.
Yes, yes. And, and to add on to that, I would just say that it was nice, I mean, it's always a nice event every year. The pivot, you know, it was seamless. You pivoted, brought it all together, and, and it wa, and it was a team effort, right? So like, you, the pictures, you were everywhere. You were very gracious. You captured a lot of what the essence of the event. I heard lots of good feedback. Vice President Lee was at the registration table. You know, YCF.
You were there.
I was putting up size. I was ready to work. I came in, like, what do you need me to do? But it was, the kids had a wonderful time, and as you said, that is all that matters. So even with the pivot, the outcome was the kids had a good time.
Yes.
You know, so, so goal accomplished, so. Trustee Goodrich was. Yes.
And they were coming when it was over. We had to give them just candy, because they were still coming. The poor little baby, it's over with? I said, oh, yes, baby, it's over. Here, get some candy.
Yes, yes. And Superintendent Zachary Ross came to, to share some words, and she was under the weather, and she should not have been there, but she was there. But, but always dedicated, always committed, al- always doing all the things. So we appreciate your leadership. And all the hands on deck to make it happen. Any other comments from the Board? I just want to remind the Board when you get an opportunity to take a look at the draft letter of support, and if you have feedback, that's a time, it's an opportunity to pursue a grant for the, for the district to support students. So when you get an opportunity, take a look at that and, and share any feedback you have. And I think we may have missed, but I'm not sure, I'll double check, the Annual Leadership Conference Call for Proposals Friday. Wow. No, it's this Friday. It's this, I know, that's quick. I mean, even though it's just Monday, maybe it's not that quick. Is it? So I'll take a look at both of those to see what the Board would like to do. All right. And we'll go, and we'll go from there.
Yes, I do want to apologize when I was asked about the dates for the one eighty. I did find it, Julie. You did good. I just want to, that was on me. I found the invoices in here. They had the date on.
Oh.
So if I would have just kept looking through my paperwork, I would have found them. I wouldn't have had to ask the question, but Julie is always you on top of things. That's why I said that to you.
Well, I'm glad you have, I'm glad you have what you need.
I'm just saying, yeah, I just, you know.
All right. Any other board comments? Dr. Zachary Ross?
Well, again, I just want to give thanks to this Board for that Easter Extravaganza. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. So thank you to our community for supporting our students. We talk about Stronger Together. It's not a hashtag. It, it is a lived experience, and so I want to thank them for just being a part of our community and just continuing to show everyone what we're about. Because this, that's, that's what it is, is keeping our students first. I want to thank Driving Possibilities. We are doing so much with STEAM already, and I want to thank them for our solar eclipse glasses for today. We were outside of the building. Yes, thank you. Outside of the building, and some students, we saw students out there with us. We were getting pictures in of students looking out with us and, and across the district, and so I hope that the students who are listening and families really enjoyed looking at our ninety, what, ninety-nine percent coverage of the solar eclipse. Our teachers, thank all the educators. I know our Pres, Madam President is here i- in the, in the audience with us who prepared lessons in advance. We know YPSY Connected went to the Toledo Zoo, and so that they could even be closer to it and, and see the full, see the full solar eclipse. And so I just want to thank all of our educators for making this experience very powerful for our students today and Driving Possibilities for giving everyone those glasses. A lot of our educators also made the, I know Dr. Lopez mentioned the modern classroom visits. That was an exceptional time last week, and so I just want to thank Dr. Coscarella and all those who made those visits amazing as well. As we end this, end this, start this last quarter, we know that this is testing season. So just reminding our families to allow the students to get rest as we start M-step, this M-step testing and NWEA testing. Allow your, your child to please go to bed early. If they eat breakfast here, let them get here on time for breakfast or feed them. Let them have a great night's sleep. We, we know that they are geniuses. Allow them to come here and show their, demonstrate their geniuses when they come, and let them know that they're going to do well on their exams. Don't let them get upset about it. Tell them they're going to do exceptionally well. Let them demonstrate it well. Tell them they're going to do, do great on M-step. Speak words of power into them. Let them know that it's okay to, 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 to express themselves on the test. That it's great to tell, to, to write it down, to show it. You know, people talk about the test and make them scared. We don't want to be afraid to demonstrate our geniuses. Let them, tell them it's great. It's going to be, it's going to go well. Speak, speak life into them. I know that our students are geniuses, and you know it too, so let us work together to, and to, to not empower them, because they already have power. Just remind them of their power, and we're just going to continue to just lift them up. So thank you for allowing me to just continue to serve here along with you. And thank you, Board, for just having a great meeting as usual. We got this last quarter of the year, and we got, well, we're really at, May is, can you believe we have graduation next month? Well, but we end the school year June, June thirtieth, so I feel like it's the last quarter of the year.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I do want to make sure that we, at some point in our meetings, discuss the, the request for special education parents.
Yeah.
So we need to have some type of town meeting or something to, because I would like to know, know more.
Yep. We can do that. Anything else, Board? Dr. Zachary Ross?